Welcome to another edition of Lakeville's City Council Wrap-Up. During this program, we will highlight the agenda items presented to the Lakeville City Council at their March 6th, 2017 meeting. First highlighted item on the agenda is item number seven, Public Hearing on the Application of Dakota Curling for an On-Sale Special Club and Sunday Liquor License. And to provide the background information on this agenda item is Chief of Police Jeff Long.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. This will be very brief. As you know, as Darcy said, Dakota Curling has applied for a Special Club Liquor License and Sunday Liquor License. They've met all the requirements for these licenses. For those that you don't know, for a Special Club License, a business must have been and established for at least three years, must have at least thirty members, and the club must have an elected board. The service of alcohol is permitted to its members and bona fide guests only. The establishment must maintain a list of their guests, and the license can be issued without a kitchen onsite, but does include beer, wine, and hard liquor. After completing our background investigation of the Dakota Curling business, the applicants meet all of the qualifications for the requested liquor licenses.
Item number seven was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number eight, Public Hearing on the Proposed Improvements to Holyoke Avenue, Improvement Project 17-04. And to begin a series of presentations, here's Public Works Director Chris Petrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. It's my pleasure to be in front of you this evening. Tonight, we are planning to hold a public hearing for the Holyoke Avenue Improvement Project, but first, we'll give a brief overview of the project and what was contained in the feasibility study. And to do that, we have two of our team members that prepared the feasibility study. We have Monica Heil here from WSB and Associates, and we also have Brian Harges from HKGI, who was just a few rows back, that also was part of the team preparing that. And with that, I'll ask Ms. Heil to come up and deliver the presentation.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Heil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. The project's scope includes a milliner overlay of Holyoke Avenue between Heritage Drive and County Road 70. This project was initiated based on the city's pavement management plan. Holyoke Avenue is just over twenty years old, and the service of the roadway has needed some improvements to extend the useful life of the roadway. And so, this project was budgeted in the city's capital improvement plan as a milliner overlay project. However, as we began discussing with business owners in the business district of the project, we realized there were additional improvements that would be warranted through that particular corridor. And so, through ongoing discussions with the Downtown Lakeville Business Association and its subcommittee, we have also included some sidewalk replacement, not only throughout the corridor, but specifically within the business district area that will enhance the business corridor. And additional streetscape improvements are also proposed within that area. Streetlight replacement is also proposed as a part of this project. Holyoke Avenue contains some of the last city-owned streetlights within the city. The city has had ongoing maintenance issues with that streetlight system, and so, as a part of that project, it is also proposed to replace those existing city-owned streetlights with streetlights that will be owned and operated by Excel Energy, similar to other areas of the city. The city council authorized the preparation of a feasibility report for this project on November 21st of last year, and a public hearing was ordered for this project at the city council meeting on February 6th. The business district that I spoke of includes that portion of the project located between 207th Street and 210th Street, and also that portion of Holyoke Avenue located north of 207th and between 206th on the west side adjacent to Babes. Within the business district, it is proposed to completely replace all of the sidewalks in that area and add streetscape improvements. That would include concrete scoring patterns, the addition of some landscape facilities, streetlight replacement, as I mentioned, and also some gateway signage improvements. The streetscape improvements will include the installation of bumpouts at key pedestrian crossings. That will also serve to help some landscaping improvements to the area. Decorative concrete scoring patterns will be installed throughout the project area. The concrete will be a standard gray concrete, but the scoring will enhance the aesthetics of the improvements. Landscaping will be installed throughout the corridor in either tree grates or in raised seat planters. And streetlight replacement will be incorporated into the design. Much of the street lighting right now will remain in its existing locations post-construction, but there will be enhanced features to highlight some of the streetscape improvements. The streetlights, as they exist today, are a mismatch of some intersection fixtures, as well as some mid-block fixtures. What is proposed is to install acorn fixtures, as you see there, at all of the mid-block locations, and cobra lights at each of the intersections. Cobra lights are used for safety purposes to better illuminate the intersections. The mid-block locations will illuminate the sidewalk areas and portions of the street adjacent to them. And the proposed improvements will be owned and operated by Excel Energy moving forward. As a part of the process of involving the Downtown Lakeville Business Association in our discussions about the improvements, there were several requests made to incorporate signage into the project's scope. And as a part of that, we are proposing to install a city message sign in front of City Hall on the north side of County Road 50, on the west side of Holyoke Avenue, a wayfinding sign also near that intersection, but on the south side of County Road 50, gateway signage welcoming Lakeville residents and visitors alike to the downtown area, and also some county-approved wayfinding signs that will be located near County Road 70 that will provide direction to motorists traveling to downtown Lakeville. The message sign that is proposed in front of City Hall will be funded using city communication funds. The north wayfinding sign that will be located on the south side of 50 will be funded using Dakota County CDBG or RIG funds to fund that improvement. And what you see there pictured are some concepts that will be further refined during the final design process, but generally show you what the size and scope of the signage improvements are proposed at that intersection. There are also north and south gateway signs proposed at the entrance to the downtown areas. Those will be incorporated into some landscaping features also proposed for those intersections. CDBG RIG funds and a combination of special assessments will fund those signage improvements. And also, county-approved wayfinding signs that you see pictured there, those are metal signs, green standard directional signage pointing towards the downtown area, will be installed as a part of this project along County Road 70 at the intersection with Holyoke Avenue. A neighborhood meeting was held with all property owners, not just business owners, back in December. All property owners were, however, invited. In that particular meeting, we discussed the proposed improvements, which include sidewalks and streetscapes. We asked residents specifically about the installation of a sidewalk on the east side of Holyoke Avenue, where one does not currently exist north of 207th Street leading up to County Road 50, and also the installation of streetlights on that side of the roadway as well. Right now, streetlights are located on the west side of Holyoke Avenue, leading all the way up to City Hall from the downtown area. But based on the feedback that we received, we are not looking to install any new sidewalk that doesn't currently exist as a part of this project. We are looking to replace those structurally deficient or damaged sidewalk panels that exist today, but we are not looking to install any extensions. We also inquired with residents any interest in matching the decorative concrete that will be installed in the downtown commercial area, and there was no interest in doing that adjacent to residential properties. Similarly, when we asked about the installation of streetlights on the east side of Holyoke Avenue, there was not a majority support for any new street lighting, and so, it is proposed to replace existing streetlights in their current locations only. The projected or estimated cost for this project are $2,348,205. Of that, approximately $1.137 million will be funded using city CIP funds. The streetlight improvements that are proposed as a part of this project will be funded using city streetlight operating funds, and the streetlight costs will not be specially assessed to any of the benefiting property owners, similar to what was done with the Kensington Avenue Improvement Project two years ago. City communication funds will fund the signage proposed in front of City Hall with the message board, now contribute about $78,000 to the project costs. CBDG RIG funds will fund $65,000 of the gateway and wayfinding signage that are proposed for the downtown area. The remaining $16,660 in signage costs will be specially assessed to those commercial properties within the project area. And street and storm sewer assessments will fund the balance of the project costs, which are estimated at $593,845. When we talk about assessments, the city's current assessment policy is to specially assess forty percent of the street and storm sewer costs to the benefiting property owners. That would include street, sidewalks, streetscape, signage, and storm sewer improvements. Those properties benefiting from the improvements are to be specially assessed. The streetlight improvements will not be assessed, again, as those will be funded using streetlight operating funds. Properties are assessed on a per-unit basis for residential properties and properties zoned for residential use. Properties are assessed on a front-foot basis for properties zoned for commercial use. And so, we do have a number of different assessments estimated for this project based either on use or by the scope of the improvements adjacent to those properties. For corner lots, only one unit is assessed for either the side or front of the unit, or similarly, front footage would only be assessed for the Holyoke Avenue frontage for any commercial properties. And this is determined by house address, house orientation, or past assessments. The estimated assessments for single-family units north of 210th Street, where concrete curb and gutter currently exists, as well as sidewalks, is estimated at $1,948.64. For those single-family units south of 210th Street, where the roadway exists as a rural section with no concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk only exists from the intersection of 210th to a point just north of the schools, those single-family unit assessment rates are estimated at $1,053.84. For those properties located within the commercial area of the project and are zoned or being used for commercial use, that is from Upper 206th Street to 210th Street, the estimated front-foot assessment rate for the surface improvements is $155.53. Though there were signage assessments incorporated into the scope of this project, whatever signage costs were not being funded by CBDG or the city communication funds will be funded using assessments. And for those commercial properties, again, located between Upper 206th Street and 210th Street, the estimated assessment for the signage improvements is $5.56. And for those non-residential properties located south of 210th Street, the estimated front-foot assessment is $11.02, and that is for the rural roadway section that will remain rural post-construction. The city assessments will be scheduled for a separate hearing at the June 19th meeting. At that June 19th meeting, we would declare costs and then set a special assessment hearing for the month of July. Assessments can be paid without interest by November 15th of this year, and the assessment period is ten years, with the first payment due with taxes payable in 2018. Senior citizens and disabled persons are eligible for deferment. Deferment ends upon sale of the property, transfer, subdivision of the property, loss of home said status, failure to renew the application on time, or death. And additional information regarding senior citizen deferrals and also for disabled persons is available online on the project website. We did receive some feedback from both the DLBA Subcommittee and the city council. We held a DLBA Subcommittee meeting on February 23rd, where we discussed the improvements identified within the feasibility report. And the consensus from the DLBA Subcommittee members that were in attendance was that they would like to move forward with the project as proposed, but that we would schedule several additional meetings to discuss final design options prior to bidding the project. What you see contained within the feasibility report is an estimated cost based on a general scope of improvements. Over the next couple of months, we'll be working with members of the DLBA and their Subcommittee to further refine the specific improvements that will be located downtown prior to bidding the project for construction. That would include some discussions regarding the signage improvements. We will also be having discussions with city staff and with the city council at a future work session prior to moving forward with bidding the project. We brought comments from that February 23rd DLBA Subcommittee meeting to the city council work session on February 27th, and provided a brief update to the council about the feedback we received. We did have one DLBA Subcommittee representative in attendance at that work session meeting, and the direction that we received was to move forward as proposed. And so, that is why we are here tonight, holding the public hearing for the project. We presented the feasibility report to the council back in February, scheduled this public hearing meeting. Should the project move forward following the public hearing, we would propose to open the bids for the project on June 2nd. That will allow us to have sufficient time to meet with both interested parties within the DLBA District and also the city council prior to finalizing plans for bidding. Once bids are received, we would declare the costs and set the assessment hearing at the June 19th meeting, and an assessment hearing for the project would be held on July 17th. At that July 17th meeting, the city council would also have the opportunity to award a construction contract. We would award that contract after all Pana Prague activities are completed, and so, there would not be any conflict with any downtown Pana Prague activities based on the construction schedule. Construction would begin in late July, and we would look for substantial completion in September of 2017 prior to the Arts Festival in September. And finally, assessments would be certified to the county in December of 2017. And with that, the next steps are to conduct the public hearing, and then also for the council to consider a resolution ordering the improvements and authorizing the preparations and plans and specifications and the advertisements for bid. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Item number eight was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number nine, Consider an Ordinance Amending Title I, Chapter VIII of the City Code Concerning the Mayor's Term of Office. And to provide some of the background information on this agenda item is City Administrator Justin Miller.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Several times over the past couple of years, this council and previous councils have discussed the term of the mayor in the city of Lakeville. Right now, the mayor's term is for two years. The city council's terms are for four, and that does create a little bit of a difference amongst other cities, not only the metro, but amongst larger cities in Minnesota. The council discussed this at the January 23rd work session and directed staff to prepare an ordinance for your consideration and for public input that would change the mayor's term to four years. And just to be clear, that would not change the current term of Mayor Anderson's term. He was elected to a two-year term in November of 2016, which expires at the end of 2018. If this is approved, the next election, which is in November of 2018, would then be for a four-year mayor term. In your packet is an ordinance, which is a fairly simple ordinance, which would make that change. And I think at the council's direction, we provided that. And then, we did publicize this through our various media outlets, social media, our newspaper ad that we put in a weekly basis, and other ways as well. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, staff would recommend that you open it up for public comment.
Item number nine was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next item on the agenda was item number 10, Spirit Place at Branch and Farm, Second Edition. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is City Consultant Dan Licht.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, council members. Dan Licht with the Planning Company, assisted city staff with a review of developments in Spirit Place at Branch and Farm. This project, being brought forward by Border Foods, is the second commercial development within Spirit Place. Spirit Place was originally approved in August of 2016 and includes the PetSmart building that's currently nearing completion for construction. This is in the far northwest corner of the Spirit Place, or excuse me, Spirit of Branch and Farm development at Pilot Knob Road and County Road 46. This portion of the development is part of the planned unit development district established for Spirit of Branch and Farm, is guided for commercial uses, essentially allowing those business types that are established in the city's C3 general commercial district. The Taco Bell Restaurant will be at the corner of Elmhurst Lane and the private drive leading into the commercial portion of Spirit of Branch and Farm. This roadway leads to the High V, which is just to the southwest of this, PetSmart in the corner. So, access to the site will be off Elmhurst Lane, the private driveway, and into the site circulating. As part of the application, they're plating this lot from its current outlot status and also vacating existing drainage and utility easements that were established with the initial final plot, and replacing those with new ones with the plating of this lot. Unfortunately, we don't have color elevations of the proposed building to show you tonight. The developers done an excellent job in terms of...
He's gonna bail you out.
There we go. Because the black and whites certainly don't do it justice as to the quality appearance that Taco Bell is bringing to this location. It's all high-quality masonry materials with various textures and colors to create a distinctive appearance for the proposed business that will be located at this primary entrance Along with the building improvements, the developers done an outstanding job in terms of landscaping with shade trees at the perimeter, consistent with the overall theme of Spirit of Branch and Farm, and then internal landscaping to highlight the building foundation, and also screening of the drive aisle that's on the south side of the property to avoid any visual glare. One of the items that the Planning Commission discussed at their review of this request was extending the landscaping along the drive aisle to around this corner so that any light being cast doesn't interfere with traffic on Elmhurst Lanes. One of the points emphasized by the Planning Commission was they weren't requesting the developer necessarily add materials and increase their development costs, but simply space out the materials with gaps within the straight portion of the site where there's no screening effect to provide the desired effect around the site. Off-street parking requirements for the site are calculated based on the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the site. And building would require fifty off-street parking stalls based on the size of the structure, as well as the unique patio element that they have with an outdoor fireplace in the front of the building. The site plan that's before you includes forty-two parking stalls, but there's a surplus of parking that's available on the PetSmart site that's accessible to patrons of the Taco Bell. So, from an overall perspective, there's adequate parking within the site to accommodate the proposed use. The developer also provided all the technical documents in terms of utility connections, grading drainage and erosion control plans, as well as demonstrating compliance with the performance standards for exterior lighting. The final item I note is with regards to signage. They're showing signage, a freestanding sign at the entryway off the private driveway, and then wall signage on the east and north sides of the building. All those signs comply with the provisions of the zoning ordinance. One flexibility included with the PUD approval is that the zoning ordinance would call for the sign on the north side of the building to be on the south side. Given the location of the freestanding sign identifying access into the site, putting the sign on the north facade makes it visible from County Road 46 and helps bring their patrons in to the site. So, that's appropriate flexibility that's functional and related to the site and was supported by city staff and the Planning Commission. Planning Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on February 16th to consider the request. There were no public comments, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, subject to the nine conditions outlined in our staff report from February 8th. And staff's conclusion is that the proposed development does meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. It's consistent with the intent and requirements of the Spirit of Branch and Farm PUD District, and we likewise recommend approval as well.
Item number 10 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item was item number 11, Ordinance Amending Titles III, IV, and XI of the City Code. And once again, to provide the background information on this agenda item is City Consultant Dan Licht.
The city council is aware the zoning ordinance is the primary means by which the city regulates land use and development within the community. This is essentially a living document that evolves over time, either based on new issues that come to the forefront in development, or changes in process and best practices for development, or new issues that will be raised from time to time as questions are raised and people come up with new and exciting ways to use their property. So, the city staff, through the course of the year, will generate a list of items that they'll request direction from the Planning Commission on with regards to potential amendments to the zoning ordinance. And so, they started this process this year with a work session on January 5th and proceeded with this first round of updates for your consideration. I'll just briefly touch on some of the highlighted items from our staff report of February 17th, first being dynamic display signs. These are regulations that were initially adopted in 2012. The Planning Commission had discussed allowance of electronic signage a number of times before. The consensus by 2012 was that the Planning Commission acknowledged the need for businesses to have the ability to provide additional advertisement as part of their operations to attract customers to their locations. So, they developed standards for allowance of those signs, and then also operational requirements for those signs that controlled the rate of change for the messages, required a static display so as to protect traffic safety and also address community aesthetics. In adopting those standards, the initial change in display was set at sixty seconds. The council directed, as is typically the practice for the city when a new regulation is put in place, that the regulation be reviewed after a number of permits had been issued to evaluate how the new standards are operating and any effects that would be identified through the actual placement of signs on the property. The Planning Commission did that in 2014, after approximately five signs were put in place, mainly at Holiday Gas Stations and a number of the local businesses that had participated as part of those discussions in 2012, Holiday Gas Station, Old Piper Restaurant, et cetera, that helped formulate the regulations that were initially adopted, and you can see those signs out in the field today. Their review in 2014, the Planning Commission recommended reducing the time change from sixty seconds to thirty seconds. City staff had provided some additional information regarding time change, and then there was also industry-based information that was considered as well. When the council received that recommendation, they reduced the time requirement from the sixty seconds that was established down to seven seconds. And again, directed that the Planning Commission review this issue in the future so that they can continue to evaluate the effects of electronic signage. So, the Planning Commission again reviewed this issue in terms of the operational standards for electronic signage, this time looking at some additional information available from Federal Highway Administration, which really focuses on the intent of regulating the change in signs, being that a person driving past the sign can observe the sign and the message being conveyed, identify what it says, and then go about operating their vehicle. What Federal Highway says is that the minimum duration for a sign change should be fifteen seconds. Of one continuous display gives the person driving the opportunity again to recognize and then pass the signage by before it changes. So, this would be approximately double the current standard of seven seconds. Planning Commission, in considering this information, found the change compelling, and so, as part of their recommendations, these zoning ordinance amendments was recommending going from the current seven seconds up to fifteen seconds in terms of operational change of display. They also recommended no change in requiring a static display, in that if there's motion in the signs or the message is changing, that requires the attention of the person driving by that much longer to absorb the information and creates a potential distraction. Some additional items that the Planning Commission addressed as part of this round of updates include prohibiting sewer connections to accessory buildings. There are allowances in the zoning ordinance for secondary housing, but the current allowance for sewer connections creates a situation where you may have housing that's not allowed by zoning and creates enforcement problems for city staff. We clarified buffer yard setback standards that were initially adopted in 1994. These were standards intended to increase the separation of residential dwellings from major arterial and collector streets to minimize traffic impacts. Those only need to apply to the principal building. If someone wants to have an accessory building in the yard and make full utilization of that property, that's appropriate, and so, that clarification is included. There's also the need to clarify a number of items related to signage. With development continuing now more towards the interior parts of Lakeville, you have neighborhoods accessed off minor collector streets, not necessarily major collector streets, and the developers prefer to have their neighborhood identification signs for their residents. And so, we're expanding the allowance of signage for those types of identification signs for individual neighborhoods. We're also addressing the need to allow for signage for commercial daycares that are located within residential zoning districts, as well as providing signage identification for multiple family dwellings, which the city council heard when we presented the Evanlea Village Green development. Another item, this goes back to a previous amendment. Coming out of the recession, the Planning Commission and city council made an effort to work with developers to facilitate the ability for them to get projects started in a quick manner. One of the ways that we attempted to do this was increase the number of model homes that are allowed in subdivisions, so that if there's a subdivision with multiple builders or a single builder with multiple products, they're able to display the full range of offerings initially. What we found in adopting that regulation, there was a provision that allowed those model homes to be started before completion of the first lift of asphalt of the streets and completion of the utilities. And in practice, what has happened is a number of permits are being issued or requested and issued that aren't intended as model homes, basically just trying to get started on the product, which is understandable and benefits both the developer and the city, but it also creates some practical difficulties for the city in terms of completing the construction in an appropriate way. City engineer inspection, also, if the houses are under construction, building inspection needs to be able to access the neighborhood. And then finally, from a public safety standpoint, if there's an accident involving a construction worker, a house builder, et cetera, there needs to be the ability to get fire and emergency people out. So, the Planning Commission is recommending a change to this provision that would limit the number of model homes that can be started prior to completion of that first lift of asphalt and the utilities to one per home builder or ten percent of the lots. So, there's still the opportunity to get something started in the ground at the same time as streets and utilities are going in, usually in anticipation of trying to make the next parade preview catalog so that there's product to be displayed. The final item I... The final item I would note is that the Planning Commission referenced or looked at allowance of waste transfer stations. There's an existing business that's operating in the city, but that use was not specifically provided for by the zoning ordinance. So, within the industrial districts, the Planning Commission is recommending establishing a conditional use permit process with specific performance standards, limiting outdoor storage, requiring operation within the building, and other performance standards that would offset any potential negative impacts. Again, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider this series of updates to the zoning ordinance. That was at their meeting on February 16th, and they are recommending approval unanimously by a seven to zero vote. City staff is available for questions.
Item number 11 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Well, those were the highlighted items presented to the council at their March 6th, 2017 meeting. If you have any questions or comments regarding these agenda items, please feel free to call City Hall. The number is 952-985-4400. Thanks for watching this edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up.